Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock, and so I'm going to go ahead and call tonight's Temecula City Council meeting to order. We will go ahead and start with the invocation by Rabbi Abrams. Thank you. And then I would ask our Mayor Protem Stewart to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, please bless our city council, management, and leaders with the moral clarity, the courage, the fortitude, to distinguish between right and wrong, good and evil, and promote true peace and virtue in our beautiful city of Temecula. As a fourth-generation American Jew, growing up in the 90s, most of my friends' grandparents were Holocaust survivors. I heard their stories, and I could never really understand how such atrocities could actually manifest in the world. How was it possible that the Nazis, may their name be erased, could gas 10,000 Jews a day for years on end without the world standing up to it? In the past two weeks, I've finally come to understand. I'm witnessing with my own eyes how my brothers and sisters in the land of Israel have been tortured, raped, and massacred, and a large part of our society and leadership is silent, vanilla, or even worse, justifying it. To be sure, the Nazis also rationalized their atrocities, and they could explain why it was humane to institutionally slaughter 6 million human beings. Neutral parties could see both sides, and they might prefer to stay out of it until the savagery reached the shores of the U.S. Dear God, please bless our city council to have the clarity, the courage, and the fortitude to stand up for what's right, denounce evil with a strong and unequivocal voice, and embrace our small but special Jewish community here in Temecula, and show us that indeed they care. Thank you.
All right. Would you please join me in the flag salute? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Calphus.
Here.
Mayor Shuen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move straight into presentations. This evening, we have a presentation by Eastern Municipal Water District regarding the Diaz Road Sewer Project. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to present this project. With me here tonight, I want to introduce Director Stephen Corona with our board, Roxanne Rowntree, our manager for public affairs, and Sean Stone, our senior director of engineering. I'm the deputy general manager with Eastern Municipal Water District, and again, thank you for this opportunity. Before I hand off the presentation to Sean Stone, who will walk through the details of the project, I do want to start by saying that this project is an example of what I believe is a great partnership that Eastern Municipal Water District has with the city. We've had many projects, challenging projects. This is one of those. And we've worked together, coordinated on the details. We've collaborated through the process. And I think that the relationship is very, very strong, so I'm really pleased for us to be able to showcase that project and answer any questions that you may have tonight. With that, I'd like Sean Stone to walk through the project details.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the introduction, Nick. My name is Sean Stone. I am Eastern Senior Director of Engineering. And we'll just jump right into the Diaz project overview. So the project is located between Ranch California Road and Winchester along Diaz and the Murrieta Creek Channel. The majority of our work is going to be located in the northbound lanes. You can see here in the project, the green line represents our sewer line that we are going to be installing. The purple trapezoids represent our existing properties. Our contractor will be staging at the larger of the two on the north side. So our project overall said it's a new sewer going in. We're upsizing an eight-inch sewer to a 15-inch sewer. What this does is accomplish the final parcels are developing in the area along in the business park and whatnot, which will add extra flow to the sewer, as well as we entered into an agreement with the Ranch California Water District on a sewer swap to allow them to eliminate one of the lift stations along Diaz Road. If anyone's driven along there, there's actually three, two of ours and one with Rancho. The project itself is complicated by being approximately 20 feet deep, right next to Murrieta Creek. There will be extensive groundwater, de-watering in order for us to be able to place the sewer. Given that it is close proximity to the creek, there is a large number of storm drains, very large storm drains that are connecting to the creek in that location. Through coordination with Pat's team over the last two years and coordinating this project with the Diaz Road Widening Project, we came to a workable solution. Knowing that we needed to expedite the project, we settled on that our sewer would be installed working double shifts. So we will be working from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., effectively shortening the overall project duration by five months. Public outreach is started in the beginning, more extensively with Roxanne, and her team will be reaching out even more. As I indicated, the design began in 2021, where we realized that the projects were coinciding with one another. Through the preliminary design, we had multiple meetings with the public works team delineating where traffic was going to go. We realized that we were going to impact the bike lane along the creek. So we worked with the public works team in order to create a detour. While it does take folks off the bike path, it does create a continuous circuit around and gives them two points of crossing over the creek. We brought our contractor on, J.W. Fowler. Two members of the team are there, the project engineer and the project manager here in the audience with us today. They've continued that collaboration with the city. You know, we actually delayed our start for the Cycle of Hope event so that we wouldn't be impacting those, and they, looking at the project, proposed a trenchless construction. They are going to be tunneling a portion of the project, which will shave off approximately another three weeks off the schedule. So as I said, we're working hard to minimize the impact and get the Diaz widening ready to go. So public notifications, we're going to be placing notice boards, permanent signs for during the project construction, as well as changeable message boards, which will provide information to the public. You can see an example of the sign that will be up for the project. The changeable message boards will deliver information such as the start and stop dates, times, any other pertinent information as the project moves and changes. So the bulk of the project, we will have the northbound lane closed for a good amount of time. The yellow portion that you can see there will close one of the two northbound lanes so that we can construct the sewer, leaving one lane of northbound traffic. Where the line transitions to white, we will be widening back to two lanes of traffic in order to free the flow in the work area. Trench repair has been coordinated with Pat. We'll be doing a city-standard trench lane repair of 12 feet wide, and then it'll be ready to go for when the city comes in with the widening road. So the bike path closure, I touched on that a little bit ago. We're going to close approximately 1,600 linear feet of the bike path. However, given that there are no other creek crossings, we will effectively be closing it from Ranch California Road to El Montezuma, since those will be the two creek crossings to be able to get back to it. The bike path detour will tail onto Jefferson Avenue, and Fowler will be setting up, Fowler, our contractor, will be setting up various signs along the way. The line work in the back is the actual detour plan, a snippet of that, and the signs shown will be an example of the signs that we will be placing to provide direction to the traveling public. So public outreach, we will usual post a community meeting so that the residents know what's going on. We'll have it up on our website, media releases, the combined efforts of the city and the district through social media releases so that the public is well informed of what's going on, along with the project signings that I discussed before. So looking ahead at our overall construction schedule, we brought Fowler on and issued a notice to proceed in July of 2023. Since that time, they've been bringing us construction submittals for the materials they're going to be supplying for the project. Here, we began the staging area setup that we are wrapping up, and that was paused for the cycle event. And as you can see there, the blue, pink, and the yellow bars are where we're going to be doing active construction, about eight months long, and then we'll have some punch list work there at the very end in the green. And that brings me to the end of the presentation, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that the council might have.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate the presentation. Any questions? All right. We also appreciate the outreach. We know that we'll hear from folks and we'll do our best to coordinate. I know Pat and the team are doing that as well, and it seems like from the presentation that you're definitely going to get the word out for folks.
Well, we want to look well-coordinated, for sure.
It definitely looks that way.
Best way to do it. Anyway, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Okay, we're going to go straight to item number 17 tonight, which is appoint members to the Community Services Planning, Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion, and Traffic Safety Commissions. Madam City Clerk, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and provide a brief staff report, and we do have one public speaker on this particular item. So I'll call them up after the staff report, and then we'll start going through the list of applicants.
Okay, thank you.
The city of Temecula, as you know, is a general law city, actually formed under the government code. The city has boards and commissions that abide by, are, they are also sub-legislative bodies under the city of Temecula. The city currently has the following vacancies on those boards and commissions. Community Services Commission, one, Planning Commission, one, Traffic Safety Commission, two vacancies, and Ready Commission, two vacancies. The vacancies were advertised and recruited for utilizing a variety of methods, including the printed newspaper, city website, Channel 3, social media, community stakeholder platforms. The application period for the vacancies was August 1st through September 30th for the 60-day period. The redacted applications were submitted for consideration within the time period. They were attached to the agenda packet. All terms will begin January 1st, 2024, and run for three years through December 31st, 2026. So with that, we only have one public comment on this item, and it is from Gillian Larson. Gillian, if you'd like to provide your comment.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff, commissioners, and Temecula. I hope you're all watching because this is going to be an amazing evening with new commissioners being appointed. I'm very happy to be home among family and friends. As you know, I've been gone for quite a while this year. But I'm also home in time, glad, I'm home in time to watch the selection of the Ready Commissioners for the next term. All of the applicants have excellent credentials and a perfect fit for the Ready Commission, but mostly they all have servant hearts and excited about what they can add to help make Temecula the town we are proud of. I was born and raised in South Africa during the apartheid regime and know how the government subjugated the majority of the population that was not white or had the same religious beliefs as they did. Bigotry and hatred ruled the land of chaos with a self-serving governance that eventually fell because the good people in their world and beyond did not stand by and watch this evil government do nothing. I just returned from South Africa. It is now 30 years past apartheid, and we enjoyed a country of incredible diversity in color, race, religions, languages, and beliefs in all age groups. Everyone is now people. Thank you, city council, for your continued support of the Ready Commission, for all of you work very hard to make everyone in Temecula people. Thank you for embracing the amazing diversity that we are honored to have in Temecula. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, unless any council members have questions. Is this for this item? Okay. So unless any council members have any questions of staff on the staff report, we'll go ahead and go through the list of applicants that we have.
Any questions of staff? Okay, let's go.
From a staff, from an applicant perspective, we had 29 applicants. Some of them applied for multiple vacancies, and we did have some that indicated that they were unable to attend or withdrew their application. Regardless, because the agenda was printed with all 29 applicants, we will be calling all 29 names, and if they are not here, we will go ahead and move on to the next individual. So the first individual is Christine Andrade. And she did, I believe she indicated she was going to withdraw, so, okay. Next is Jacob Armstrong. Jacob Armstrong. Okay. Trevor Benke. Trevor Benke. And Trevor also indicated that he was unable to attend. Deana Berry. Welcome, Deana. And each applicant has up to five minutes to go ahead and provide counsel and community with any additional information they would like outside of what was already provided in their application.
Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, council members and community. My name is Deana Berry, and I have been a resident of Temecula for eight years. My purpose for being here this evening is to request that I be given consideration to serve on the Ready Commission. A little background at the end of why I'm here tonight is that at the end of 2019, my son had decided to open a business in an underserved community outside of Temecula, and then COVID hit four months later. His business was shut down for over a year, and upon opening was met with a multitude of other challenges, as many of us know, that COVID brought upon. He has made attempts to tap into city resources to help him navigate the uphill battle of merely keeping the business open, but the building blocks of sustainment weren't available to him, and he has continued to struggle through that. Watching him navigate these challenges and experience several setbacks made me pause and think about our community and whether we have available resources and services that meet the needs of our diverse community. I want to be part of a thriving and successful community, but recognize that success means something different for each of us based on our upbringing, experiences, culture, and beliefs. We build community through diversity, equitable opportunity, and inclusive insight. But this can only be achieved when we have intentional conversations about the needs within our community and among those greatly impacted. I ask what is available to the neighbor starting a business, to a colleague in crisis, to a family about to lose it all. While the scenario doesn't change, the individual response when asked will be different from one person to the next. How do we become intentional and show up as a community? Participation in city discussions, in city offices, getting back to simply learning who your neighbor is, contributing to meaningful conversations, recognizing our differences, create new opportunities, and desiring to see each other win. I am here today asking to serve my community with intention and to be part of the Ready Commission with the goal of making resources, services, and programs available that align with the current needs while creating opportunities that allow individual success and the strengthening of a winning community. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, I just want to make sure there's no questions from council for you. Is there any questions?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Deana. The next applicant is Jason, I think it's Butchko. Jason Butchko. Okay. Skip Carter. Robert Carter, Skip. Okay. Damon Davis. Damon Davis. Okay. Christine Draskovich. Welcome, Christine.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Christine Draskovich, and I'm here for consideration for the Race Diversity and Inclusion Committee. My husband and I moved to Temecula in 2019. We bought our home right before the pandemic. My parents have lived in San Diego and the Point Loma area for the last 30 years, so we were very familiar with Temecula. And my husband and I love the city so much, we decided to make our home. I come from a very diverse family. We have a variety of religions, ethnicities, and races in my family. And through their lens, my family members' lens, I saw the struggles that many of them had with diversity and inclusion, both in the workplace and in the private setting. And this really motivated me to not, to get off the sidelines and take some action. My first opportunity to do so was I chaired a Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee at a Fortune 6 company. It was a great start, that they admitted that the committee needed to be formed. And they even gave us a great mission statement. The problem was, they never went past a mission statement with us. There was never clear direction, understanding of what our charge was supposed to be. Myself and the committee members tried to come up with various initiatives to even improve hiring policies and practices, for instance, even names. There is psychological safety in names, even. My husband is not psychologically safe with his name in the U.S. He's not U.S.-born, and he has an American name. So I've witnessed a lot of things that can help hiring and that can hurt hiring. And the, part of the other problem was, we didn't have a real buy-in with leadership. Every time we spun various ideas, it was always met with a no. It was never a no, but here's what you can think of. It was a no, but go away. So it became very clear to me, as I was sitting and chairing this committee, that it was something that was really a checkbox for HR, and there was never going to be any real teeth to this. So I actually ended up resigning the position on the committee. Now, at my more recent employer, I have really witnessed what good commitment looks like from an employer. They've taken a very large topic, diversity and inclusion, and have been distilling it down to really tangible group, focus groups that can get things done. For instance, in light of the recent atrocities against Israel, the company has come together and done a matching donation for anything that we contribute to various charities, they will match. And they've opened up forums for all of us to sit together and discuss our thoughts and feelings of what's happening in the Middle East. And actually, a very timely situation today, I actually received a spot award from my vice president, and I just wanted to read his words and what he said to me. He says, "Thank you for having the courage to inspire on how to have an inclusive and psychologically safe environment in which team members feel confident sharing ideas and collaborating in a consistent manner focused on improving, improvement rather than status quo." There's two things in there that are very important to me. We can always improve. Sitting at the status quo is generally not okay when it comes to diversity and inclusion, and it can be little steps. This is a big topic. It's okay to chunk it up into smaller topics to show improvement rather than try to tackle the impossible if we look at the whole scope of things. And the second thing is psychological safety. In today's environment, you see it on the news, you see it in social media, and maybe some of you all have even experienced it in your personal life, where you have an opinion and you're attacked for it, something as simple as wearing a medical mask. Well, how I deal with my medical safety and concerns shouldn't be in a, I shouldn't be in a position then by attacking someone who doesn't feel like wearing a mask. So this is very simple issues all the way to large issues. And for me, I've come to love the city of Temecula. We are going to make our home here and settle here permanently. And I've seen what professionally, in my professional space, I've seen what good looks like in diversity and inclusion, and I've seen what bad looks like in diversity and inclusion. And I want to take what I've learned from these experiences and try and help the community in the city of Temecula, so I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Christine? Okay. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Next, we have David Flores. David Flores. Okay. Ernesto Gonzalez. Ernesto Gonzalez. Okay. Robert Harvey. Welcome, Robert.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, staff members. I'm the new guy. I just moved in in May of this year, down from Seattle. And a question has been asked, why would I consider a position? Why would I be considered for a position in the Traffic Commission? Well, I have a personal belief that all citizens should give back to the community. They should be contributing. They should be helping out. They should be doing things. And whether it be running a Cub Scout troop, or HOA, or maybe sitting on a council meeting or a commission meeting, that's going to help out. Why am I here, though? For my contribution to the committee, to the community has been through law enforcement. As you read in my resume, I spent 10 years as a reserve deputy in L.A. County and 20 years with the Seattle Police Department as a reserve officer up there, the last 12 years with the gang unit. But in addition to that, my civic responsibility was working with a men's group that worked with underprivileged children, usually young males in high school, to help them learn how life can be different than maybe what they're seeing in the streets. On the other side of it, I also served on, as a Seattle City Employees Retirement System, as a trustee to $3 billion organization. That's because my background is banking. I've been a banker since 1971. But the third reason why I want to be considered for the commission, I have never worked here. I haven't lived here. I didn't have any children here. I didn't go to school here. I don't know very many people. I know a lot of people in my community now. My wife has made a point of meeting 37 different families. And by the way, it's a new community. It's summer's been, and it's really a cool community. Thank you very much for that. And the people are really good. We're having a great time. But I want to make sure I meet people outside of my own community. So putting my background together, the things I've done, things I, traffic makes a lot of sense to me. I was a motor officer for seven years in L.A. County, and I can tell you all kinds of stories, but you don't really want to hear about them. So I think I can, I think I can contribute. I think I can help out, and that's what it's all about, and I appreciate your turn.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Robert? Okay, we appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Stephanie Hernandez-Dawson. Ross Jackson. I saw Ross.
Good evening. Good evening. I debated long and hard to throw my hat in the ring for the Ready Commission. And part of the reason that I wanted to do this, and I know every one of you for 20 years, worked with every one of this team in one capacity or another. This year, I went to the LGBTQ meeting at the Ready Commission and tried to be a voice of reasoning because of the outrage of within all of the participants and the audience was not given the chance to the speakers to speak. And what I tried to say and do was be a voice of reasoning, and my background is of that, a voice of reasoning. Prior military, eight years, spent, you know, disabled vet, worked with a lot of disabled vets in the area. And one of the things I was trying to explain to everybody was, it's okay to have an opinion. Being open-minded in opinion is one thing. Being a closed-minded in opinion gets you nowhere. If you believe in what you're trying to do and accomplish, you can move mountains. But if you're in there only to be braggadocious or not supportive and not listen to other people, you're not doing this country and this city any good. I firmly believe that my background, not only in the military, civilian life as well, my life story and the age that I am brings value and worth to a unit like this. If you look at the current diversity on there, yes, granted, there is a diverse group. But what are we looking at? What do we want to do? Where we want to go in the future? And how do we want to move forward? If we just lineate ourselves into a small group of people, we are not focusing on the true equity of the people. And in doing so, there's people out there, there's a man in a wheelchair over by Walmart. He's a military vet, sitting there begging for money. If we are inclusive in everything, we should be able to stop and give him support like we do all the other homeless people. But I see nobody stopping. I do occasionally ask him how he's doing, helping him out. But I am not just there to give him money. We need support for our military people in this area. And I think that's what I try to bring to this diversity group, is that it's another focus. I believe I was very respectful at the diversity program, and that's what I bring too, is I bring calmness. I'm not going to, I'm not going to sugarcoat the answer you're going to ask. I'll tell you the truth. If you don't want to know the truth, don't ask me the question, plain and simple. I have no agendas other than the fact that I love the city. Been here for 2003. I met my wife here and settled in, and I participated a lot in the city, as well as everybody knows. I was the chairman of the Old Town Local Review Board. I am the vice president of the Temecula Association. I am the vice president of the Temecula Association, Old Town Temecula Association. So I'm very active, and I try to strive for the betterment of the city. And therefore, my values feels very complimentary to this commission. We had eighty participants the last time, candidates. I was one of those as well. If I can't serve on the Planning Commission or other commissions that I truly want, I want to still be able to be a vocal voice in how the city runs itself. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Ross? Hold on, Ross, you have a question?
Hey, Ross. One quick question, 'cause something you brought up is, you brought up your age as a factor. Um, what does that look like for you as far as bringing diversity to the Ready Commission in that respect?
The, uh, the fact that, yeah, I'm seventy years old, there's a lot of people in this city and community now that are reaching the retirement age or beyond the retirement age. And I've been to several places where they don't feel like they're being heard. You know, they're much of a minority group as anybody else. And quite honestly, it's okay to help the kids, but now we need to help the parents. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Um, next we have Wendy Jones. Wendy Jones. Okay. Monica Lacombe. Okay. Lyman Lecters, I did not see him here. Um, Kylie Malone indicated she wanted to withdraw. Uh, Jessica Martel. Jessica Martel. David Maddox. Hi, David.
Good evening.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, commissioners, staff, neighbors. It's good to be with you all tonight. This is one of the meetings that I look forward to the most every year because it tends to bring out some of the best in our community. I love hearing how eager people are to serve and how much they genuinely love this home that we all share. Now, Temecula has been my home since nineteen ninety-one. I can remember a time when we had quiet country roads, when there was just one high school in town, and on Friday nights, every family rooted for the same team. Our little town has grown in amazing ways since then. But I still look at Temecula as a handmade city with an all-American, small-town feel, big enough to have most of what you need, but still small enough that you can access it. And when I served on the Quality of Life Master Plan Committee, it was very important to me that we secure that piece of Temecula's identity and that we put to paper the principles that keep our city in motion. I think that when you get down into the everyday local issues that really have an impact on people's lives, well, Temecula residents are more unified than some might think. You know, we have in common a set of core values. We all want safe neighborhoods, better transportation infrastructure, a healthy and livable city. And these are the values that I strive to put into practice, both on the Active Transportation Advisory Panel and on the Traffic Safety Commission. Now, the commission that we have now, I'd say, is working very well together. We've built, uh, mutual respect between commissioners. We've built trust with city staff. And we each bring our own unique and yet complementary perspective to the team. My perspective is one of a full-time working dad with a daily commute. I spend a fair amount of time in my car each day, thinking about ways that we can all spend less time in our cars commuting and more time with our families. You know, as a parent, I see and experience Temecula through the eyes of my kids. And we teach our little ones how to follow safe routes to walk to their elementary school and to our neighborhood parks. And we go on city, um, we go on family bike rides together and discover, you know, little details about our city that, uh, can be easy to miss from up in a car. Because you really do develop a different sense of ground truth when you're traveling closer to the ground. You notice every bump and groove in the sidewalk. You notice how the urban tree canopy is curated to provide shade in many areas, or how the streets and bike lanes are kept clear of debris, and the underpass is kept clean of graffiti. And this perspective, I would argue, is a worthwhile one to have on the commission, especially when you consider that nearly a third of our residents don't drive. Now, not to overgeneralize, but that's generally our younger population, like my kids. But it's also increasingly residents like my parents, you know, long-timers, many of whom are looking for alternative ways of getting around. And when you also consider how our streets comprise more than eighty percent of the total public space in our valley, well, then questions like, who gets to use that space and how they can use it have significant implications for Temecula's mobility, safety, economy, and quality of life. And so as our city continues to work towards completing our streets, I believe that I can continue to make myself useful. And that's ultimately why I've decided to reapply for this position. I'm fully engaged in this work because I live it and I love my city, as you can probably tell. I'm very proud of this town that I grew up in, sometimes to a fault, I recognize that. But ten years from now, I want my kids to be proud to have been raised in Temecula too. And in order for that to happen, the work must continue. And we didn't get this far just by resting on our achievements. We've got a lot more to do. And so with the approval of the council, I'd like to roll up my sleeves for another three years and give back to this community that has given me much to be thankful for. Thank you so much for listening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I actually, so David Maddox, um, thank you. And I just saw Lyman walk in. So, Lyman, we'll go ahead and hear from you now. I know we moved the agenda item up, so thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for your grace, and my apologies for being late. I had to drop my grandson off. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, really pleased to be here to, again, invite you to consider me for, uh, another, uh, term as a Ready Commissioner. Last two years, I've spent serving on the commission. It's been an honor and privilege representing the city, participating in the numerous events around the city, really exploring what's going on here in Temecula. And I'm excited about the future of Temecula. My wife and I moved here two years ago, a little over two years ago, to be near our grandbabies. We moved to this city because of the community, because of the built community, the family orientation, the schools. And I'm really pleased with our experience here, really excited about the future. And we have issues to continue to work on, continue to, to solve. I've spent over forty years in human services, working on behalf of vulnerable children and families, making sure that they are, their communities are healthy and whole, that they have access to what they need. And I continue to contribute that. I have a national perspective, work for a national foundation, and I'm excited to bring that experience, that, those connections here to Temecula. It's my belief that we leave it better than we found it. So my grandbabies are what it's all about. That's what I'm trying to leave the community for, for them. This is our watch. We have the ability, the opportunity to make things better. And I'm just excited to be here. I hope that you will, uh, reappoint me for another term on the commission, and it would be my privilege to serve again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Lyman? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lyman. Um, next we have Laura Reich. Laura Reich. Welcome, Laura.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you for allowing me this time. I love this city, and I would like to be considered for the Community Services Commission. And if you'll allow me, I'll just read a little bit of Water Road. I, um, as you can see, and I don't know if you've taken a look at my application, but on my application, I just, I have listed all the things that I've been involved with in this community. I like to be involved, um, I like to see progress, and I like to get things done. I love traditional values, but I'm also open-minded about change and different points of view. I am a creature of habit, but I also look for, I'm also looking for a better way to get things done. I like meeting new people, and I like making others feel comfortable and welcome and appreciated. I'm honest, respectful, and a good listener. I've spent a span of almost thirty years in this city. I have raised four successful and happy adults in Temecula. And, um, we all loved all the time and the memories that we spent here. They all played all kinds of sports, um, from soccer and baseball and hockey. They learned to swim through the, the city services that they offered. And as a family, we all enjoyed the many services that city had to offer, and I would like to be able to do that now, just return that to other families. In reading the City of Temecula's mission statement, I feel I'm capable of achieving the goals that you are entrusting upon the Community Services Commission. And I would like to be able to be part of this committee and help fulfill the city's goals and promote our city and all the good things about it.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions? All right, thank you for being here, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next we have Lee Rosso, Russo? Okay. Matthew Ryan? Matthew Ryan? Odeah Salman? Okay. Kathy Seismore?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Schwank, Mayor Protam Stewart, City Council Members, City Manager, City Staff, fellow commissioners, and most importantly, Temecula residents. I'm Kathy Seismore, and it has been my incredible honor and privilege to serve as a Commissioner on the Community Services Commission for the past three years, and as the Commission's Chairperson for the past two. I have lived in Temecula since nineteen ninety-seven. I moved here twenty-six years ago. I was dating this young man from Temecula. I lived in Anaheim at the time where I grew up. And I'm very, very happy to say that today, that young man and I are celebrating our twenty-fifth wedding anniversary here with my city council family. I had a reservation for Benihana's tonight, but that's okay. I've been promised that I get to go there tomorrow. I just want to express just how much gratitude I have that I was given this opportunity to serve as a Commissioner. It's just been such an incredible honor and privilege to get to be in this role, to get to know all of you, and to serve our residents. If I had a word to describe how I approached serving as Commissioner the last three years, that word would be engaged. I've made it my priority to attend as many city functions as I can because I know that this is where I'll have an opportunity to engage with our residents, to talk to them, to hear their feedback about events. And it's also where I have an opportunity to engage with city staff and encourage them and hear about their jobs. I've had the incredible honor of serving as a member on the Blue Ribbon Committee, working on the Quality of Life Master Plan. I learned about how this Quality of Life Master Plan is a driving force in how we plan our city and run our city. And I learned about how the city places such a priority on the quality of life of our residents. And I'm so excited to see the vision that we cast in that document for our city, looking forward to twenty forty. I had the opportunity to be part of a working group working on the Urban Forest Management Plan because trees are important. Could you imagine any one of our parks here in Temecula without a tree? And what about our trails without trees to provide shade to our residents? That was just an incredible honor to get to do that. And what about those beautiful utility art boxes that we have here in Old Town? I love how those art boxes has helped to create such an ambiance in Old Town. And it was just such a privilege to get to participate on the Art Selection Committee for that. I've taken many opportunities to engage with our residents, whether it's celebrating the holidays with our special needs adults at our High Hopes Events, uh, celebrating with our seniors at the Senior Center, or talking to Cub Scouts in our community as an appointed official about their role in their local government. If I could cast a vision for what a second term would look like for me, I'm gonna say more of the first, expect to see me engaged. Yes, I'm gonna make my husband dress up as Buddy the Elf for the Christmas parade again. Sorry. I'll get you a better wig, though, that other one is bad. Okay? If I had to pick some things that I really want to work on over the next three years, the first item would be promoting opportunities for education, especially for our youth, in bike safety. Biking safety is really important to me, and I really want to pursue more opportunities for public art installations in the community. We have an amazing community of artists that I've been so blessed to get to know and own some of their pieces. That's the danger of coming to art night on the first Friday, is you go home with art. And I'm especially committed to seeing the fruition of projects that I've seen developed over the past three years, such as the pickleball facility. I didn't know what pickleball was before I got here, but let me tell you, one thing I know about pickleball now is that pickleball community is very passionate about their sport, and we need more pickleball courts. I've been hearing that for three years. So I'm really looking forward to those more pickleball courts. And I'm looking forward to the skate park remodel. I spent some time out at the skate park, getting to know skaters. And I'm not gonna use the words that they describe our skate park with because that's not appropriate for here. But I will tell you that I do understand now what a bowl is, and I understand why our bowl is not good for skaters, but it's good for BMX bikers. It, it's legendary, is what I've heard. And another thing that you can look forward to, if I have a second term, is more of me in my neon vest and my bike. I love biking in Temecula.
Kathy, if you could, and I hate to cut you off, but if you could just up it up, that would be, we would appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, community services is really important to me. Um, I do owe an apology to city staff. You know, three years ago, when I spoke, I shared that city, that community services had the greatest impact on my family and our memories and our life here in Temecula. I've definitely learned how community services plays a big part in the heart of what we do in, in Temecula. But we wouldn't be who we were without the rest of city staff support. We need public works, we need finance. So thank you, staff, for all that you do for us. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, next is Tyler Slawinski. Tyler Slawinski. Um, Laney Charlie Trejo was unable to attend. William Weston withdrew. Okay, Daniel White. Daniel White. Okay. And lastly, Denise Wilson.
Good evening.
So, good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, guests and staff in Temecula. My name is Denise Wilson. I have been a resident of Temecula for the last eighteen years. I am heavily involved in our community. I give back, not just give, but I give back. I volunteer at Temecula Valley Hospital. I'm on several boards. I've also had the opportunity to speak at the Women in Business on Diversity in the Workplace. And recently, I was awarded the Community Service Award by the Ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I currently serve on the Ready Commission. I also serve on the Chambers D E I Commission. I serve at the state, the local, and the national level for diversity and inclusion for the Realtors Association. If you were to ask me what the Ready Commission means, I would say it means that we are all different, we have different beliefs, we have different backgrounds, but together we are a powerhouse. And that's what it means to me. As an original member of the Ready, um, Commission, please know that this commission means a lot, first of all. In the beginning, we spent long nights, and I do mean long nights, reviewing policies and procedures because we wanted to make sure that diversity was woven into every department here at the city. If you have ever attended one of our meetings, you can see that we lead with compassion, with empathy, and with care. An open mind, and we also listen to what other people are saying. We truly do care about our city and how the changes will impact our community. It gives us hope when decisions are made and- It gives us hope when decisions are made and topics are changed that affect our community. But most importantly, the Ready Commission has been given an opportunity to listen and to add our views through the ready lens. And that's very important. I'm going to be honest. In the beginning, it was truly a challenge because people didn't know exactly the what, the why, and the who. They didn't know who we were. But after the last three years, they know that these are people that are involved in the community. You're going to see them out and about. You're going to see them volunteering. You're going to see them at different events to let them know that we do care. And I think the Ready Commission is like a conduit to the city council. People see us out and they're like, "You're on the Ready Commission." Well, what about this? Well, what about that? Can you talk to the city council? Because they feel they can't come and approach you guys, and they really can. I tell them, "They don't bite." And they're like, "But can you just, isn't that you guys' role?" And we honestly appreciate that. And we're like, "We'll take it back to the city council. We know we can just sit down with each and every one of you that your door is open to let you know what our community is asking." So what I want you to do is just to remember when you're putting in your decision, we want people on all of our commissions that are passionate, that are people person, and they are doing this not to gain any type of accolades, but to really care about what's going on in our community. So we have a great city here in Temecula, and it can only get better. And I know by having people who care about our city on the Ready Commission and who want to work together for positive change will be the best candidate for our Ready Commission. So I ask for your vote as a candidate to be a change, a voice of change for our community and to be that connection with a smile and a willing heart. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Denise. Mr. Mayor, that concludes everybody that was on the list who've named, we've called. So at this point, we'll go ahead and turn it back over to you to facilitate appointments. Our preference is to go one by one. So we have one vacancy on the Community Services Commission, one vacancy on the Planning Commission, two on the Ready Commission, and two on the Traffic Safety Commission.
Okay, all right, I'll happily facilitate that. So we'll go ahead and start with the Community Services Commission. And what I'm going to do is I'm just going to start with one of my colleagues, and we'll kind of work our way around. And then for the next commission, we'll start with someone different. So for the Community Services Commission, I'd ask Councilmember Calphus, if you'd like to start with your recommendation.
My recommendation with that would be to stay with Kathy Seismore. I think that, like she said, she has been engaged with her time on community services. And I think that she has earned another term as a member on that. So Kathy Seismore would be mine.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alexander?
Kathy Seismore.
Councilmember Brown?
Kathy Seismore.
Mayor Potem Stewart?
Kathy Seismore. But I do, I really want to acknowledge Laura for being here and for actually, I was very impressed with you, so please don't give up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd also, I'd agree Kathy Seismore has been sort of that model commissioner. And in fact, many of the commissioners we have now are that. They show up at events and they participate and they add a ton of value. I'd also like to, you know, mention Laura, obviously, for being here. That like the, the, the time and energy it takes to come to something like this is significant and it demonstrates a lot to me. And I say this every time we do this. I think it's important that folks keep applying and keep engaged. And if this doesn't happen here, it's not the end of the road. We are all available and participate in the community in many different ways, so stay engaged. So Madam City Clerk, we have one down.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll take, we'll take one motion at the end. And you are correct, Mr. Mayor, as a reminder, our annual, our boards and commission recruitment process happens every single year. Every single year on all four boards, all four commissions, there are vacancies. The recruitment always happens in fall with the application period open in April and September. So we definitely encourage folks to continue reapplying. Next, we have our Planning Commission, and we have one vacancy there.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move to the Planning Commission, and we're looking for, to fill one vacancy. I'm going to go ahead and start with Councilmember Alexander. If you'd please start us with Planning Commission, your recommendation.
Linay Trejo, please.
Okay, Councilmember Brown?
I support Linay Trejo.
Okay, Councilmember Calphus?
Linay Trejo.
Okay, Mayor Potem Stewart?
I hate the way this sounds, but Linay Trejo. But, and I want people to not think that this is a, it's going to be a rubber stamp. Once you're on, you're on forever. It, that's not necessarily true, except for when they're doing an amazing job. And she does an amazing job, so that's the reason.
I would agree. Linay's been a very good commissioner. She brings a very different, unique perspective, I think, to Planning Commission. That's very much valued and even by her colleagues. Several colleagues have reached out supporting Linay. So that's always important as well. So I would support the reappointment of Linay Charlie Trejo to Planning Commission. Okay, and we'll go ahead and move on to Ready Commission. So we're two applicants or two commissioners for the Ready Commission. So I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Brown, your two recommendations.
First, I'd like to nominate Denise Wilson. And the second would be Lyman Lecters.
Okay. Councilmember Calphus?
I would echo Councilmember Brown and also select Denise and Lyman.
Okay, Councilmember Alexander?
All right, so this was, this was an easy but hard decision for me. I know you're looking at me like, "What?" No, you guys are good. So for me, I'm looking at Ross. He has like such experience. He has a different perspective in a lot of different ways. In my opinion, I would love to be able to put you in there right now. I would encourage you to come back next year. Right now, I think I'm just going to go with the two that we have right now. I've been seeing what they've been doing and watching, and I'd like to just continue where you're at. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Potem Stewart?
Again, I agree with the rest of you, Denise and Lyman. But I was also very impressed with Christine. So again, don't, don't give up because I think you're a good fit too, so.
All right, I would agree. Lyman and Denise are both serving their first term and have demonstrated a willingness to listen and participate. And, and I would agree that they are both very good Ready Commissioners. So we will move to Traffic Safety Commission. We have two applicants or two commissioners available here. So I'll go ahead and start with Mayor Potem Stewart, if you don't mind on that one.
Okay, so again, Robert Carter and David Maddox are my choices. But I was really impressed with Robert Harvey. Again, I think you being new to the community and already wanting to get involved is very impressive. And I think you should keep pushing, and I think you'll find a home here one day, so thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Alexander?
I'm going to echo that, the same thing. And Mr. Harvey, I agree with exactly what Mayor Potem said. I, I enjoyed listening to you, your background, what you have to bring. And I just want to encourage you to continue to get involved. And I would love to be able to see you back here in a year and see where that goes. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes, Robert Carter and Dave Maddox. And Mr. Harvey, I also appreciated your presentation tonight, so hang in there.
Councilmember Calphus?
Robert Carter and David Maddox.
Okay, I'll make it quick. I would agree again that Robert Carter and David Maddox are both doing a fine job. They offer a good sense of stability, I believe, on Traffic Safety Commission. I think that's important. On all the commissions, that stability is important. So I would support the reappointment of David Maddox and Robert Skip Carter. So Madam City Clerk, do you want someone to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So at this point, staff has noted that the city council would like to appoint Kathy Seismore to Community Services Commission, Linay Charlie Trejo to Planning Commission, Denise Wilson and Lyman Lecters to the Ready Commission, and David Maddox and Skip Carter to the Traffic Safety Commission. And if we could have a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let us vote. Okay, and that motion passes five zero. Thank you. And again, thank you to everyone that came out tonight and submitted for an opportunity to serve with the city. Stay engaged, and for the commissions you applied to, I would encourage you to attend those meetings. It's something you can connect with commissioners and staff on, and I think it's valuable to do that as well. All right. Now we're going to go ahead and go back to our board and commission reports. We'll go ahead and start with the Planning Commission. Commissioner Hagel, would you please give us your presentation?
Okay. That's us.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for appointing Linay again. She's done a great job. So our first subject that we discussed was the Complete Streets Policy. And the state of California with Assembly Bill thirteen fifty-eight now has, requires every city to have a Complete Streets Act or is the act and have a Complete Streets Policy. We've been doing this for many, many, many years now. So this is really just for us putting it in writing and incorporating it into our plans and manuals. But what a Complete Streets does is it has us look at every street for the use for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and motorists. Not every single street will accommodate all of those four, but there, we plan around that. The, where the challenge becomes is where our streets meet other cities' streets in other cities, the other counties, Riverside County and San Diego County, and possibly even Pechanga. We've been, we've enjoyed some pretty good cooperation, so that has worked quite well. And we still have lots of plans to complete more streets, particularly for bicyclists. There is a lot of places where you get out to the county and it's, it's difficult to find a, find a safe path. So that was a receive and file. It did not require a vote. The second subject was amending Title seventeen zoning. And this was a much, much more complex subject. And basically added, the state has added a number of new definitions, number of new zoning types. We had to incorporate them into our fifteen PDOs, our planned development overlays. It has affected eleven of those overlays. And I won't read through the list. You can see what that, that list is. But there's, this was a big challenge for our planning department as well as the commission, just understanding this and incorporating it. If you look at all the charts and where all the changes were made, it's, it is fairly complex. But it is required by law. It was passed four to zero, and we will be incorporating it as we go along in, in all of our plans. What this does not mean, though, is that this does not approve any particular project or make any other changes. This simply allows it to be zoned for those, those purposes. The last thing I just wanted to do was to shout out to Public Works. There's a project that they've been working on for a lot of years now that is something, it's not very noticeable. They didn't dig up any streets to do it, but is to put in our fiber optic traffic signaling system. And it's all in and all implemented. I know there's tweaking that'll go on probably forever. But I've been driving the streets, testing it out, and I will say, traffic has moved a lot better. I can go up and down Margarita and Nez or Rancho Cal, and I can hit three, four traffic lights green in a row, and that's a wonderful feeling. So thank you very much. And Pat, pass it on to, to all your folks that we're all enjoying it now.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Hagel? All right, Christine, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Schwank. City council members, city staff. The Ready Commission is made up of seven, seven residents who serve together as an advisory group with the city council. We make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhance community relations. And our last meeting was on October the twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations to my two commissioners that got reappointed tonight. It's always nice to see them come back. So at our last meeting, we did receive a presentation from the city's IT staff regarding the use and expansion of public Wi-Fi in Old Town and throughout the city. The IT, IT staff was able to share how they apply equity lens in their services, including when delivering public Wi-Fi to all members of the community. The commission and the staff also discovered effort, efforts to bridge the digital divide, public Wi-Fi and access to education legislation related to broadband, infrastructure, existing and planned Wi-Fi locations based on the census tract and other related data. We also discussed future charging stations for the CRC, the MRC, and overall social inclusion through online community. We also received a presentation from the city's social media staff regarding the use of social media in the city. Specific topics of the discussion included inclusive content that represented of our community and a measurement of data efforts, demographics and statistics, followers on social media, primarily on Facebook and Instagram. There is a huge DEI effort in the social media posts. We did notice a huge improvement in the last three years. And our city does not use stock imagery. They use our own community members, which is always so wonderful to see. So we had a great presentation by them and thank them for being here. Lastly, our commission, our next commission meeting is going to be on November ninth. And we are going to be giving the proclamation and celebrating Native American Heritage Month. And as always, our community members are invited to join us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you both. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our public safety report. We have the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and Chief Durham. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, and residents of Temecula, good evening. This month, the month of September, your deputies responded to six thousand and sixty calls for service. It turns out to, on average, about two hundred and two calls for service a day. As you can see on the slide, in twenty twenty-three so far, we're at fifty-seven thousand calls for service, just a little bit over, and we're on par with, with numbers in twenty twenty-two. And that's my report. Are there any questions?
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, we'll now move on to public comments for non agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments on non agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, we have several public comments on non agendized items. Each speaker has three minutes. The rules are in the agenda. The first speaker is Janice Richardson, to be followed by Jeff Whitick.
Okay, good evening. That's good.
Mayor Schwank, Mayor Potem Stewart, city council and staff. I'm JR Richardson here with my wife, Janice Richardson. And we are the founders of the Temecula Valley Dachshund Club. We're the wiener dog people in town. And we are here tonight to tell you about our next big event coming up November fifth at Vail Headquarters, the Temecula Fall Wiener Fest. We do two events a year, and our fall event is there at Vail Headquarters. It's a beautiful venue. Last year at this venue, this event raised, helped to raise over ten thousand dollars for dachshund and small dog rescues in Southern California. We have people come from San Diego, Los Angeles. There's a contingent that comes from Las Vegas. We even have people come from Washington State and Texas to attend our Wiener Fest events. Our big feature at this event, of course, is the Fall Frolic Dachshund Races. Last year at Vail Headquarters, we had over a hundred and forty dachshunds race for the crown. A dog from Hisperia won. So this year, we're hoping to bring the crown back to Temecula and have a Temecula dachshund win the races. It's a lot of fun if you haven't been out and seen it. I know some, some on the council have, have been there and enjoyed it with us. The other fun event we also have, relatively new a few years ago, is Destroy the Toy. This is where you take about twenty dachshunds and you give them each a toy. And the first one to get the squeaker out wins the title for Destroy the Toy Champion. And the record was set at our last And the record was set at our last event, less than three minutes to get the squeaker out of a toy. The fuzz was flying. It's just a really fun event. It's a family-friendly event. We have over 20 vendors at Vail Headquarters, lots of food and beverage options. So, just a really fun day, November 5th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's the day after the time change, so you get a little extra sleep. Get out there, and anything to add?
I think you did a great job.
Right, like we practiced. All right, that's it. We appreciate your time and hope to see you out there.
Thank you.
One question. So, do all dachshunds go after that squeaker?
Not all, but so we, you can enter your dachshund to do that activity. People who put their dogs in for that contest know their dogs do that at home, so, yeah.
They have prior knowledge. Madam City Clerk, next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Jeff Whitick, to be followed by Tammy Marine.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My comments tonight are toward the council members. As elected officials, unfortunately, sometimes you receive offensive messages from people expressing often repulsive views. How you handle such messages is effectively a test. It's a test of your character, your leadership, and your professionalism. On September 28th, Councilmember Alexander received such a message. The text messages disparaged all of the other council members. I'm not going to read them verbatim, but I'll give you the lowlights. It discusses Councilmember Curtis as being lazy and disrespectful, the mayor as mocking our civic system and giggling with the queers. It discusses Councilmember Calthes as being a Zionist Jew, used car salesman that could never be trusted. And it also discusses Stu as being the city court jester. It then goes on to say that all of the council members are useless eunuchs, and one could imagine a samurai sword to all of their necks. What's most important is not the receipt of messages. You all get them. I know you do. I've been in government for 46 years. What's more important is how you respond to them. What do you do about them? How did Councilmember Alexander respond? Did she respond and exhibit strength of character, leadership, and professionalism? Did she push back on the racist, homophobic, anti-Semitic, and hateful slurs? The answer is no. No, quite the contrary. Instead, she celebrated the disparaging comments. Amen, sister. No regrets ever. The response, once again, demonstrates an unfitness to serve on city council. Frankly...
Your time's up.
Okay, sir.
The next speaker is Tammy Marine, to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Tammy Marine, CEO of Habitat Humanity Inland Valley, and I'm here to thank you and give some brief insights on our partnership with housing. At Habitat, our programs are designed to address the affordable housing crisis by providing decent and affordable housing for those that are low and moderate incomes. Creating affordable housing does not lie in the hands of just one city. Building units is complicated, due to high cost, lack of capital, SEQA, social disparities, and more. You also can't have a fair conversation about housing without addressing the barriers to housing that include things like underemployment, poor credit, lack of a social system, language barriers, and more. These are some of the challenges Habitat is trying to address every day. Despite Temecula having one of the highest homeowner rates in the state at 64%, Temecula still has sought out our partnership with us for now over 20 years. I'm proud of the fact that together we're building and repairing homes while supporting personal responsibility, and here are three examples I just want to share. First, the Habitat Way Two development, consisting of six homes, is currently underway with future projects being brainstormed. Noteworthy fact here, a recent study showed that if Habitat were able to elevate more subsidized families into homeownership, we would save taxpayers billions of dollars while providing needed financial stability. Second is our newly opened real estate and education center helps to create a path to homeownership in a variety of ways for those who choose to engage in the program. And three, our home repair program, which was incubated in Temecula, now serves the region, and we completed our 1,000th repair this year. It's important to not only create new units, but preserve the units we have and allow seniors to age in place. I wanted to invite each of you on the council to reach out at any time when you get inquiries on housing, so we can offer perspective and expertise. Doing that, in my opinion, could really help protect precious, precious staff time. We don't claim to know everything, but it's important that you seek insights from those actively engaged in the field. And lastly, we invite you to consider attending Habitat Advocacy Days in late January in Sacramento. Your advocacy for more support from the state level would be a powerful and low-cost action that would have a positive impact on the city, I believe, in the years and months to come. So, thanks to the council for asking the hard questions and caring so genuinely for everyone in our city. Special thanks to our dedicated city manager and deputy city manager and the entire staff, including the community development team. Habitat Humanity looks forward to what we can do together in the months and years to come. Thank you for having me.
All right, thank you.
The next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by our last speaker, Melissa Bourbonet.
Okay, good evening.
I want to say thank you to city manager Erin Adams for publicly committing and acknowledging, seeking funding and partnerships with, how you referred to it, corporate America. I brought this idea to the table and suggested it numerous times, a minimum of five times, between the commissions and the council, but also behind closed doors at multiple meetings. Funding is required if we're going to create attainable homeownership. We need a better presentation on CLTs. Maybe I can help you present that next time. But attainable homeownership needs to be our focus. For seven years, I listened to city council bemoan the state for taking away RDA funding, while at the same time complaining about how I need to make room for affordable housing. I watched the planning commissions. I watched all the city council meetings. Seven years. Without getting paid to do this job, Melissa, myself, and together as upward community, we are bringing ideas of where the money can come from. It's now in your housing element. Money exists. There are ways to get it. Let's go get it. Don't wait for it. We can do better. Habitat is one model. It's not the only model. We need to put all, everything on the table and start throwing everything at the wall to see what will stick. You know our names. Please don't call us public speakers. We are not strictly public speakers. I'm Laurel Lamont, Melissa Bourbonet, and together, upward community. We have been advocating for attainable homeownership here, publicly, and at meetings with city staff. Sincerely, thank you, and I look forward to the progress that this city's going to make should we follow through on that commitment. Finally, I wanted to be clear and for the record that RDAs, that's redevelopment agency funding provided by the state, was taken away because of a recession, not a train that was built or planned to be built. It was also misappropriated, and my time is up. Thank you.
And the last speaker is Melissa Bourbonet.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I brought this so I can kind of stay focused. Oh, where's the, okay, thank you. Can we start over? No, okay, I see it. So, hi, thank you.
Melissa, if you could just speak into the mic, because no one else can hear you. There you go.
Yeah, now I'm running out of time. Okay. With all due respect to city staff, the CLT presentation that is so important, it's so important, it just, it didn't seem clear what the city can do. And then the decision was to take the CLT discussion or that agenda item and just take it or send it to committee. And I want to provide a little bit of clarification in two minutes and 20 seconds. First of all, city council was advised that you can't purchase affordable housing property. You can purchase affordable housing property, and putting emails up here to show that's come from city staff. So, you can purchase property if you want. It's an option. I'm not saying it's what you need to do. I'm saying it's an option. CLTs are an option, right? The city of Irvine, it says right there, and I got this from you guys, the city of Irvine established a CLT. They established it. So, you can also establish a CLT. That's an option, too. You don't need like a developer hero person that doesn't exist. So, that's what I wanted to tell you. There are options here, and it's time for you guys to take action. What else? Oh, it's supposed to be a little bit more. Okay, so what else? This is from your housing element. Of course, of course, Councilmember Alexander, this is your role. It is the role of city council. That's why you have a housing element. So, based on your housing element, in 2020, you got numbers there, slide number 24, in 2020, you needed to earn $125,000 a year to be able to afford a house in Temecula at $500,000. Well, we all know now that's cheap. That was 2020. So, another reason why you have to take action and not just send the item back to committee again is because it's changing. It's changing quickly, and as this changes and prices go up, then the amount of people who can purchase homes, that goes down, and the housing crisis gets worse, and the homelessness gets worse, and that really, the racism, the abortion, all of it, it gets worse because it's all tied to housing. And we would explain that if we had more than 37 seconds. Okay, here's my thing. ARCOG, right? ARCOG, they have people that they pay. They paid people already to do research. They produced a 58-page report in 2020 that said, hey, we recommend that you go with a housing trust. They made that recommendation, and from that recommendation in 2020, you guys are seven to 10 years out. It's time for action. Finally, last thing, you have roughly 50,000 people. This is Erin Adams, 50,000 people that make under $125,000 a year now, and housing prices are $730,000. It's time for action. That's it.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there any more public speakers? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move to our city council reports. Do any of my colleagues have anything for our city council reports?
I will go.
Go ahead, Councilmember Alexander.
Thank you, sir. So, to the gentleman that came up earlier, we seem to go down this road a lot, and unfortunately, it seems like you took things out of context once again. There was a part of that message that I know was sent out, but yet unfortunately, you did not, I don't believe you read that part. So, let me read that. This individual had stated to me at the end, "We stand up for the fight for justice and protect what is sacred to the Lord. Thank you for not compromising, and don't worry about these eunuchs. Eunuchs think of you and how they treat you. Remember, they hated Jesus first. Why? Because he spoke the truth." So, going back again, this was going back to the last meeting that you, sir, know that I had issues with of my beliefs as a Christian and believing in Christ. And since you're bringing this up, I just, that's the reason I'm talking about this. So, I'm not going to respond because I know you ask for my emails on a monthly basis. So, for right now, I'm not going to continue to just blurt out my information. My text message was replying to that one section of something positive. So, that's where that message was, and I just want to confirm that with you, so that way you understand that instead of just asking for, you know, just blurting things out because somebody else sent something in. If I have a problem with somebody, I go directly to them. I do not need a text message. So, I just wanted to clarify once again with you that that was a text message. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown, do you have anything for council reports?
Yeah, I think I have a slide. So, it can't be overstated that November 9th here in council chambers is Native American Heritage Month, and they'll read a proclamation, present the proclamation, and then have visitors here within the chambers. In line with that, also, got to meet with Jacob Mejia. He's the director of public affairs today with Pachanga. We had like a 30-minute meeting, and we discussed just future events that's happening here in the city. Within that 30 minutes, we committed to meeting more regularly, and then I'll provide updates if they become available. But thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. I do have a couple of quick slides, so if we could throw up the first slide for state of the third district. So, this past week, last week, we had a chance to attend Supervisor Washington's state of the third district, where we received a presentation on the thriving third, as it's referred to. Very wonderful presentation by Supervisor Washington. A lot to look forward to in our third district here, and a lot of, I feel like there was a lot of fundamental changes at the county that this current board, including Supervisor Washington, were part of shepherding in. So, I think we're in good hands with the Board of Supervisors in the third district. So, it was a good presentation. And then, this Friday night, we have our Halloween carnival, which is always a favorite. It's down here in Town Square in the Civic Center Quad, which is wonderful. It used to be at the CRC, and I think we moved it down here a few years back, and I just really, it's just a wonderful night. So, I want to encourage everyone to come down for Halloween carnival, and I'll be doing one of the final two Meet the Mayor booths, so you have an opportunity to meet the mayor and chat with myself. And I actually reached out to Supervisor Washington as well to see if he'd like to join me, and so he'll be my special guest at this Meet the Mayor booth. So, come down for Halloween carnival. We'll have some treats, some candy, and you can ask us anything that's on your mind. All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to our consent calendar. Well, item number one is wave reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Two, approve action minutes of October 10th, 2023. Item three, approve listed demands. Four, approve city treasurer's report as of June 30th, 2023. Five is adopt ordinance number 2023-08, amending sections 2.04, 0.050 of the Temecula Municipal Code, revising the salary for council members to $1,900 per month pursuant to Government Code Section 36516, second reading. Six, approve easement agreement granting Eastern Municipal Water District an approximate 480-square-foot non-exclusive public service easement located within parcel A and parcel B of parcel map 23561-2. That's APNs 910262060 and 910262061. Item seven, award construction contract to Lomac Builders, Inc. for the citywide concrete repairs. That's PW2317. Eight, award a construction contract to Lomac Builders, Inc. for sidewalks, Old Town improvements, additional streetlights on Moreno Road and Mercedes Street east of Old Town Front Street, PW22-17. Nine, approve amendment number one to the transportation uniform mitigation fee TUMF agreement to reimburse TUMF funds with Riverside, sorry, with Western Riverside Council of Gurbans for Fringe Valley Parkway Phase III, Jefferson Avenue to Inez Road right-of-way phase project number PW19-03. Ten, approve stop controls and pedestrian analysis for Mercedes Street between Sixth Street and Third Street. Eleven, approve track map 38043 located on the south side of Rancho California Road, approximately 150... Eleven, approve track map 38043 located on the south side of Ranch California Road approximately 150 feet west of Cosmic Drive. And item number 12 is receive and file temporary street closures for 2023 Winterfest events. I will entertain a motion and a second.
I will make the motion, but please recognize both Councilmember Alexander and myself on item number five as a no.
Okay.
And I concur with that.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we need a second?
Second.
All right, let us vote. Okay, and that passes 5-0 with the noted no's on item five. I'll go ahead and recess city council meeting to schedule a meeting in the Temecula Community Services District.
And I will start the Community Service District meeting. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. We have the consent calendar as item number 13, approve action minutes of October 10th, 2023. And number 14, approve revised community service department policies. Oh, did we have any public comment? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll move consent.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Please vote. All right, that passes, I'm assuming. 5-0. All right, so let's go to the Community Service Director's report.
Good evening. I just have a couple of slides. Sorry, I had my wrong screen up. We have our patriotic salute to veterans on Saturday, November 11th, and this is an annual event. It's a really lovely concert with the symphony. We invite everyone to come out and show their appreciation to all of our men and women who have served this country. The event begins at 6:00 PM. It's right out front here in the Civic Center Quad, and you can find out more about it online. And that concludes my report.
And I'll just add to you, that is such a cool event. I mean, if you think Temecula has a small-town feel, you go to that, you're convinced because it feels like you're in Mayberry. It's just an amazing event, but I have a feeling it's going to be very chilly, so dress very warm to be able to endure the evening. All right, General Manners' report.
No, I just want to add that, yeah, definitely come out and experience the talent of our local symphony. It is an amazing event, and they put on an amazing show.
All right, any Board of Directors?
Sir.
All right, so I will adjourn the meeting to the next one.
Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we'll move to item number 15, which is receive and file Assembly Bill 1600, financial reports fiscal year 2022-23, development impact fee expenditures. Director Hennessy, do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, we do. Good evening, mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is a summary of the development impact fee expenditures for fiscal year 22-23. A development impact fee is a fee imposed by the city on a new development project in order to mitigate the impact on public facilities from that development. In 1989, the state legislature passed Assembly Bill 1600, which added section 66,000 to the California Government Code. This legislation was known as the Mitigation Fee Act. Section 66006 requires an accounting of development impact fees be provided at a public hearing every five years. The city has a practice of providing the report annually in order to provide for maximum transparency. Per the Government Code, development impact fee revenue must be spent within five years of receipt on eligible capital projects that mitigate the impacts of the development activity. Currently, the city has eight separate development impact fees. For fiscal year 22-23, just over $8 million in development impact fee revenue was collected across the eight separate DIF accounts. A total of $155,000 of interest was earned, and just under $4.5 million was expended for eligible capital projects listed here. The remaining DIF fund balance for all eight accounts totals approximately $8.4 million and is programmed for expenditure in accordance with the capital improvement program adopted by the council on June 13th, 2023. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions of staff? Okay, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on this item? I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on this item? I will go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, and with no questions, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for item 15 and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. Okay, and that item passes 5-0. Thank you, everyone. All right, item number 16 is Consider a Planned Development Overlay Amendment, planning application number PA23-0260. I'll go ahead and ask our city attorney to give a brief report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. At this public hearing, Councilmember Calphus and Deputy City Manager Luke Watson will not be participating due to conflicts of interest. Councilmember Calphus's wife is a teacher at Linfield School, which is where this PDO will be amended, and Mr. Watson has children that attend Linfield School, so they will need to leave the council chamber.
Okay, we'll go ahead and give you a second to leave, and we'll let you know when you can come back. All right, may we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Schreik, members of the city council. As you stated, this is PA23-0260, the Linfield Christian School Plan Development Overlay Amendment. So it is a plan development overlay amendment to adjust the boundaries for three existing planning areas and the creation of two new sub-areas within an existing planning area. There are no new development or land uses are proposed as part of this amendment. So I know there's been some flyers that have been made from the public to neighbors of the Linfield School. So I just want to make it clear this doesn't propose any buildings, no grading. It's just moving some lot lines around and creating new planning areas. So here's the location of the project. On the north, you obviously have Ranch Vista Road. On the south, you have Paba Road, and the existing Linfield School is located at 31950 Paba Road. Little bit of background. Is on September 16th of 2003, the Linfield Christian School Plan Development Overlay was approved by the city council. So in terms of land uses, again, no new development or land use as part of the amendment, and the plan development overlay has always allowed for and currently allows for the development for the following land uses. So what this is showing is today, five years ago, tomorrow, a developer could come in for an application for any of these land uses. You know, it includes an auditorium, a community center, congregant care housing, daycare centers, an educational institution, government services, golf course, a library, a new sheriff's station, senior housing, trade vocational schools. So these are all things that could be developed already. It could be developed today. It could be developed tomorrow. None of that's changing. So on the left, you have the existing planning areas for the PDO, and on the right, you have the proposed planning areas. So what's being proposed is Planning Area 3A is being reduced from 15.58 acres to 7.36 acres, and Planning Area 3B reduced from 12.42 acres to 5.82 acres. So what this does is reduces by 14.82 acres, and that's the important number to keep in mind throughout this presentation tonight. So again, the existing and the proposed. So New Planning Area 1C is 5.43 acres, and New Planning Area 1D is 9.39 acres. And obviously, those equal the 14.82 acres that was being removed from 3A and 3B. So you're just moving the lot lines around. No acreage is being lost, no acreage is being gained in the overall PDO. So those new planning areas, they'll be retained as part of the main campus for the future educational and athletic programs, as well as retaining senior housing as a potential land use opportunity. So overall, on the PDO, what is actually happening here? So planning areas that are remaining unchanged are 1B and 2. Planning Area 1A is the exact same acreage, it's being reconfigured. Planning Area 1A is where the main Linfield Campus School is today. Planning areas, acreage that's being reduced and reconfigured are 3A and 3B, and then the two new planning areas are 1C and 1D. So no net loss, the 14.82 acres. So the city is not allowed to change zoning of parcels where housing, which also includes senior housing, is an allowable use to a less intense use, including eliminating the ability to develop housing without replacing the loss of the area somewhere else in the city. So senior housing is currently a conditionally permitted use in Planning Area 3 and is not permitted in Planning Area 1. So this goes back to the 14.82 acres. The proposed amendment will result in a reduction of residential capacity in Planning Area 3 by 14.82 acres. So the city either has to go find land somewhere else in the city that's not currently zoned for residential and rezone it to residential, or we can take those 14.82 acres and add them to Planning Area 1 because currently senior housing is not in allowed use there. So what this does in the end is the housing capacity lost from PA 3 is just being transferred into Planning Area 1, so there's no net loss in the city. So this is just what the land use table will look like in the plan development overlay. So we're adding in 1C and 1D. Senior housing becomes a conditional use permit of 1C and 1D, and then we add language in that just states senior housing is allowed in PA. 1C and 1D of Planning Area 1, and senior housing is not permitted in Planning Area 1A and 1B. So this came up at Planning Commission is, why is Linfield choosing to do this right now? So this is the north side of the Linfield Campus. Ranch Vista Road is on the top of the screen. So if we focus here in the red circle, we currently have a planning application in in order for Linfield to expand existing parking, expand an existing maintenance yard, and then add solar canopies. So this is the current existing lot line. You can see it goes right through the middle of that project. So with the change in the lot lines, the lot line is now on the north end of the project. No longer goes through the middle of the project. So that is the main need at this point for the Plan Development Overlay Amendment. So with that, secocatacor exemptions are 15061B3, as there's no possibility the proposed project would have a significant impact on the environment, as well as section 15305, which is class 5 for minor alterations in land use limitations. So this did go to Planning Commission on September 6th of this year. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the Plan Development Overlay Amendment. And with that, staff does recommend the city council approve PA230260, adopting an ordinance approving the Plan Development Overlay Amendment. That concludes the presentation. I'm here for questions, and the applicant, as well as Linfield, is here as well.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions of staff before we move on? Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have four public comments. The first speaker is Bob Rainey, to be followed by Maureen Dresch, and each speaker has five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Bob Hagel, if I, no matter where I go, if I hit three green lights in a row, I'm stopping over and buying a lottery ticket. I mean, that's my lucky day. Regarding the Linfield plans, when it's a simple boundary change and there's nothing planned for building, that's in this, that's in this submittal, absolutely. But in the presentation, in different pages, it'll state that the proposed amendment will create a more practical and developable parcel for configurations A3 and AB. So what they're looking for is an easier way to build. That's the way I see it. I am very self-centered on this. My property backs right into the Linfield property. When it was spoke about the list here, auditoriums mentioned in all the submittals one time, fields mentioned one time, a helipad, heliport mentioned one time. Residential senior housing is mentioned 22 times. So in my view, the die is cast on which way they want to go. I'm afraid that one day I'm going to walk out of my backyard, or walk into my backyard on the house that I built 21 years ago, and there's going to be a three or four-story because that's what's talked about in here for senior housing, three or four-story, three or four-story pink tanish stucco building that I'm going to look at and just block out my view of these hills right out here that go into Duluth Canyon and my view down into Ronald Reagan Park. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Maureen Dresch, to be followed by Edward Hubler.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I am one of the homeowners that lives on the perimeter of the property that's being discussed tonight. And I also would like to say that in March, I will have lived in and on property in Temecula for 50 years. I would like to think that means something. At last month's Planning Commission meeting, and again tonight, we heard that the change is all about parking, parking structures for their students. But I don't believe them, and that's why I'm here tonight. When I purchased this, the house, this land was supposed to be a golf course. It was supposed to be a nine-hole golf course. My house looks out directly over where they want to do their development. Contrast that several years later, and they've transformed it now into an assisted living complex with a four-story structure anchoring that project. I know that project's not moving forward now, and I'm grateful for that. But my neighbors and I haven't forgotten that the previous city council voted in favor of that project. They voted in favor of it without considering our concerns and our protests as neighbors to this project. I think portions of this land are unique. This is probably the last open land available in Temecula in what I would call the heart of the city. And there's a wide variety of wildlife that live on that land. It would be really a shame to wipe that out. Most of our residential neighbors have no protection from the increased noise, increased pollution from added traffic along Ranch Vista Road. We will suffer losses for our property value. And we're the ones that really ought to be able to trust that our concerns related to this project will be heard, that they won't be dismissed out of a greater desire to grow wealth for Linfield stakeholders and for the city. And I agree with the other speaker. But I honestly don't know what you guys see when you drive around the city these days. I see congestion. I see overbuilding. I see... I don't see, what I don't see is the balanced environment that was originally planned. You guys are the ones that can make a difference. So my question is the same question I asked the Planning Commission last month. And that is, when will quality of life become a concern for all of you? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Edward Hubler, to be followed by the last speaker, Deanna. The next speaker is Edward Hubler, to be followed by the last speaker, Deanna Eliano.
First of all, I'd like to say that, remind everybody that the land that was donated, that Linfield sits on, was donated for a Christian school, not for senior housing or low-income, high-density housing, but a Christian school. I'm sure the people who donated the land are turning over in their grave when they found out that they're trying to build senior housing on land donated for a Christian school. There's been a slew of new laws in California have legalized construction in more neighborhoods around the state, including church parking lots. Fifty-six bills were signed by Governor Gavin Newsom on October eleventh, addressing the bills left, lifting restrictions and regulations on housing. One bill would fast-track the building of low-cost, multi-unit housing in existing residential neighborhoods. Another law, and this is important, will make it easier for nonprofit schools and faith-based organizations to build low-cost, multi-unit housing on land they already own, known as a "Yes, God's Backyard," would let organizations bypass certain regulations and permit rules to build low-cost, multi-unit housing in church parking lots and also under property that they already have. It seems that Newsom thinks that religious organizations are especially well-positioned to provide low-cost, multifamily housing. I ask you, why all of a sudden, after all these years, no explanation on why they want to change the boundaries, is Linfield looking to make changes to the boundaries, and they're not telling anybody why? There has to be a reason. I ask you to vote no on the boundary changes until Linfield comes up and tells everybody why they want the boundary changes.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The last speaker is Deanna Eliano.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Appreciate your consideration of our request for the PDO amendment tonight. Although Linfield Christian School has been in operation on the Papa Road property since nineteen seventy-three, it was in two thousand and three that we developed a master plan and had that approved by the City of Temecula, as well as the establishment of the Plan Development Overlay. At that time, and continuing to today, as your planner, Scott Cooper, indicated, is that it's, the land uses are all what's consistent with the general plan for the property, which is public institutional. So, we've not changed any of the land uses. We're not proposing to change any of the land uses by this action tonight. Just to give you a little bit of background, again, to reiterate why we're doing this now, it was questions that had come up at the Planning Commission as well, and I appreciate the additional exhibits that were added tonight to help clarify that. Even though our master plan has served us well over the past twenty years, we have, our enrollment has grown, we've been blessed to be full at all of our three campuses, and some of our facilities are aging, and so we need to make some adjustments. And part of that is to add some additional parking adjacent to our existing high school to cover the parking, that new parking area with solar panels, to help reduce our electrical costs, and then to update our maintenance yard facility and expand it, which was built in the nineteen seventies, and it no longer meets our needs. So, that's our reason for doing the PDO, the reason, not that we're changing any land uses, but because we have some existing lot lines that are coterminous with those planning area boundaries. In order to advance our applications with your development staff, we had to move those lot lines. And that also required us to do the PDO amendment and adjust the PDO planning area boundaries. If it wasn't for those requirements, we wouldn't be before you tonight. We've submitted planning applications and also lot line adjustment to your Public Works Department. We have a minor modification that's on file for our parking and our solar and the maintenance yard that's going through the process. And so, we just need to be able to make this adjustment in the PDO to have those applications be able to be approved so that we can move forward on that. That's, that's our reasoning in doing this. And as was explained, the reason the, the creation of the Planning Area One C and One D is to satisfy state housing law requirements for that no net loss. It's not because we have a desire to construct any housing on Linfield's main campus. Our intention for that area, one C and one D, is to expand our educational and our athletic facilities pursuant to our master plan. So, be happy to answer any questions that you might have, also in terms of if you want any deep dive in the history on the property and when we purchased it in nineteen sixty-eight. Ken Crawford, who's also on the Board of Trustees, is here, and he could address that, as well as our head of school, Mark Corthen, is here as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any clarifying questions or anything for the applicant or of staff?
Yeah. So, you say you purchased the property?
Yes.
So, it wasn't donated?
No.
Okay.
Maybe, Ken's been here, Ken's been involved with the school even longer than I have, so maybe he could address.
As the applicant, you'll have an opportunity to add to the conversation?
Yeah. I would like to, so, so explain to me how the property came into the hands of Linfield.
Sure, I'd be glad to. My name is Ken Crawford. I'm the chairman emeritus at Linfield Christian School. Been associated with the school since nineteen eighty-five. And when I came on the board, there were nine elderly gentlemen who were men from Los Angeles, where the school has its roots, in Culture Academy, which was established in nineteen thirty-six. In nineteen sixty-eight, they closed down the school in Los Angeles, took the proceeds from the sale of that property, came out to Temecula, bought two hundred acres of land, of which the school currently resides a hundred and five acres. A portion of that land was sold off, which I believe now resides the Temecula Valley High School. Okay? So, they purchased the land in, in sixty-eight, sixty-nine, came out here in seventy-three after doing their plans, broke ground, and you might say the rest is history. We've grown with, with the city, and we're enjoying quite a bit being in, a part of Temecula, in the heart of Temecula, and raising up students with a very quality education for the valley.
So, were you part of the Board of Directors when you created a master plan for the remainder hundred?
Yes, I was. I was chairman at the time.
So, and, so that was in two thousand and three it got approved by the City Council?
I believe that was the date.
And so, this overlay, it does include development of portions of that in, other than?
Well, the PDO overlay, as I understand it, is really our zoning document.
Right.
That was asked by the city staff at the time to be created.
Yeah.
And at the time, when the property was brought into the city in nineteen eighty-nine, the general plan at the time designated that as public institutional.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And so, the PDO overlay essentially mimicked the public institutional uses that were already in place at the time, but we, we honed it down to more specific areas in the, in the different ones that were identified on the map.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant or of staff?
I just wanted to make a comment. I appreciate you personally coming. You didn't have to, but you almost did, but I think you just brought clarity to the subject. And what you've explained, ma'am, is consistent with what I was briefed with as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Madam City Clerk, I'll go ahead and close the public hearings, since we have no more public speakers, and we'll go ahead and move to discussion and/or a motion to approve item sixteen. Any discussion?
Could I ask Scott a question?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, Scott. So, explain to me what can be built by right? Do they have a right to build certain things on this property?
Right. So, everything, when we have the presentation, everything in the land use table that I showed you is either conditionally permitted, which they would need to get a conditional use permit along with a development plan.
Okay.
Or permitted, where they would only be responsible to get a development plan.
Okay.
So, any of that stuff, like I said, could have been built since two thousand and three till today.
Right.
We could have had an application in today for any of those uses. Tomorrow, they could have an application in for any of those uses.
Right. Okay.
So, like they said, we're not adding any new uses.
Right.
It's just what's on the existing table.
All right. And it's been there since, for twenty years?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, you can move to comments right now. Thank you, Scott.
Awesome. So, I just want to thank also the, the homeowners that came in to, to talk about what they're seeing, and let me tell you that we do take that into consideration. I'm looking here right at the map, and I'm trying to talk to staff and just making sure that I have a full understanding of where you're at and your, your needs and quality of life, so I want to let you know that that is important. It's very important for all of us to make sure. But I do want to say, you know, listening to the lady, I'm so sorry, I forgot your name, ma'am, that came up at last, I love the fact that, you know, when you're talking about reduced cost, it's been a couple of years since we actually were at Linfield myself, and I understand, you know, obviously with prices, things are going up, but the tuition assistance, I'm sure that this is a big help for these families as well, to be able to keep costs down, and knowing that back area pretty well, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. So, I appreciate you just kind of putting a little bit more into that and giving me a little bit more understanding to be able to make a decision up here with my colleagues. So, I just want to thank everybody for coming up because it was, it was important to hear every single person. So, thank you so much, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Alexander. Okay, if there's no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve item sixteen.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Okay, and that passes for zero with the noted recusal. I'd like to go ahead and call back Councilmember Kalfis, and you can hear us, and Deputy City Manager Luke Watson, back to the room. And we will move on to item number eighteen. Under our business calendar is introduce ordinance amending Temecula Municipal Code Section two-point-four-zero-point-one-zero-relating to compensation for city board and commission members. Madam City Clerk, do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This will be a brief staff report, and we have no speakers on this item. The City of Temecula is a general law city formed under the laws of the State of California. The city council compensation for general law cities is set forth in the government code, and then the city council subsequently sets compensation for its boards and commissions via ordinance. The current compensation for boards and commissions is set at one hundred dollars per meeting per Temecula Municipal Code Section two-point-zero-four-point-one-hundred. On August eighth, the city council directed staff to conduct research and return to council for further direction of neighboring cities. At the September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three meeting, the city council reviewed the research of what cities in the county of Riverside are paying for their stipend, and approved an adjustment to the city board and commission compensation from one hundred dollars per meeting to one hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. It is now recommended that the city council go ahead and introduce the proposed ordinance to begin the process to codify the newly adjusted amount. With that, Mr. Mayor, again, there are no public speakers, and we ask that the council go ahead and consider the item and then consider a motion.
Okay, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve item eighteen.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote, please. Okay, and that is approved for one with Jessica, Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Alexander voting no on that. Item number nineteen is approve five city council protocol manual policies and provide general direction regarding code of ethics at the request of subcommittee members Alexander and Kalfis. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna go ahead and bring up the slides for you. So, this is on your agenda tonight at the request of subcommittee members, Councilmember Kalfis and Councilmember Alexander. We're gonna go through a little reminder, just for the, the public record. The city council protocol is a common founding document that can be found in many cities. It's designed to assist the city council and staff to reference and memorialize existing policies and procedures and improve efficiency and effectiveness of the city council and staff. It has a ton of general policy content, things like council roles and responsibilities, conflicts of interest, et cetera. You can see that there on your slide. These were all approved by the city council previously. The drafting of the policy includes extensive research and analysis on best practices, written policies, resolutions, and ordinances of other organizations as well. Next slide, please. So, you will recall that this process started back in the summer of twenty-twenty with our Ready Initiative. This was actually the last item in Phase Three of our multi-year program. And so, we really started to, in July of twenty-twenty-one, the city council approved the general policy content of the manual, and then throughout the next two years, you can see, next slide, please, that we continued to work on a variety of policies that we worked through the subcommittee process, and we came back to city council, received additional direction, kind of went back. We spent a lot of time, the bulk of twenty-twenty-two was really spent on the framework for the public recognitions policy. Next slide, please. That is more additional on the public recognitions policy. We spent a good amount of time, as you can see, on the inclusionary proclamations, and it wasn't until the end of December twenty-twenty-two where the council approved the final direction of the public recognitions policy. Next slide, please. And then after that, we really got going. We went ahead and approved five more policies. We considered two more that weren't adopted, but you can see that we've been busy for the last couple of years on this effort. Next slide, please. So, tonight, what we have for you is the next five proposed policies. The first policy is the use of city letterhead and seal. The next one is state mandated training. The next one is complimentary ticket use and reporting policy. The fourth policy is related to electronic communications and technology resources, and the last one is related to conflicts of interest. In addition to asking you to approve these five policies tonight, we wanted to get some general direction from the full city council on your code of ethics as well, and that is one of those policies that staff needs general direction on prior to drafting. Next slide, please. So, just generally speaking, city letterhead policy is very simple. It indicates that the city letterhead could be used to reflect a majority position of the council under the mayor's signature, or it could be used by an individual council member under their individual signature. Regardless, the letter, the correspondence with the letterhead must reflect whether it represents council collectively or an individual member, and all members receive copies of correspondence. The city seal, its use is limited pursuant to the government code. Individual use overall is prohibited, and only official document use is allowed. With respect to mandatory training policy, at this time, the state mandates two hours of ethics training and two hours of sexual harassment prevention training per the government code, so those two items are in the policy itself. All of the policies were attached in the agenda packet as well, and in the future, if there's more, we'll continue to go ahead and add to this policy. Next slide, please. With respect to the complimentary ticket use and reporting policy, this one's pretty simple. Our council has actually been already in practice abiding by it. We just haven't codified it. The Political Reform Act actually codifies in the government code that the city's conflict of interest code, as far as the requirements affiliated with reporting gifts and requirements affiliated with reporting. and requirements affiliated with reporting on your Form seven hundred and the related F U P C regulations. So, what we did on this one was the policy is very simple, and then we just went ahead and attached as exhibit A our existing complimentary ticket policy, thereby embedding it into your city council policy and your manual as well. Next slide, please. This is another one of those, the use of electronic communications and technology resources. We already have a citywide policy that is applicable to all employees, including the city council, regarding the use of the city's systems, electronic communications, and technology resources. The city council is already well aware of, regardless of whether it is resources that are owned by the city or by council members themselves, public business conducted on these devices is subject to the Public Records Act and disclosure. All of the laws related to the Brown Act and Public Records Act are expected to be followed, including social media uses. And this is very similar. What we did is we took the existing policy and we attached citywide policy, and we attached it as exhibit A, implementing it into the city council protocol manual. Next slide, please. And of course, the last policy was related to conflicts of interest. Again, we talked a little bit about this in the previous policy. It's similar, but not exactly. So, in this situation, we went ahead and incorporated the summary of conflicts of interest manual that is prepared by our city attorney annually as an exhibit, as well as our conflict of interest code, which the city is required to update every two years. It's approved by the city in even numbered years. We went ahead and included all of that into the policy, thereby incorporating it into the manual. Next slide, please. Okay, so that was actually the easy part. Those policies are routine technical policies that you can find in any city council protocol manual. The other thing that we attached in the agenda packet itself was six samples of codes of ethics from different cities. Huntington Beach, Elk Grove, Watsonville, Lodi, Carlsbad, and Santa Clara. And what you'll notice is regardless of whether it is a one-page code of ethics or a three or four-page code of ethics, they are all very similar in values. So, you'll see things like respect. You'll see things like trustworthiness. There's a similarity of language. There's a similarity in its application to council when it interacts with one another, as well as community and the public, and the form is generally similar as well. Next slide, please. So, with that, and we're going to leave this slide up for you as well. You should have a hard copy of this sample policies in front of you as well. And tonight, what we are asking for first is the adoption. We have no public comments, Mr. Mayor, for the record on this item. First, we are asking for the adoption of the next five policies in the city council protocol manual. That leaves us with about three, and we're looking forward to wrapping that up prior to the end of the year. And if we can get a motion to approve that as submitted by the subcommittee, that would be fantastic. And then, and we would ask you, Mr. Mayor, to go ahead and facilitate a general direction discussion in regards to the code of ethics. We'd like the following three questions answered. Which values from the sample policies would you like to see in the code of ethics? Are there other values that you would like to add? Is the language in the sample codes in line with what you were thinking collectively as a council? To see language similar to that? And lastly, is there anything that was not included in the sample policies that you would like us to consider? With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask, I'll turn it over to you, but I'll also turn it over to the subcommittee members, Councilmember Kalfis and Councilmember Alexander, to add anything additional they would like.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for the presentation, and if the subcommittee would like to add anything, certainly, I'd love to hear.
Sure, I'll kick off. All right, so I just want to say thank you for Brendan because we had a little bit of time in there. Well, it was good work, I think, you know, just looking over everything. I want to thank staff also for just kind of helping out, guiding the conversations. And I see the importance of having the code of ethics and being able to put policies in place. I looked over several of these, and I can just say they were all good. Some of these, for me, were super short and kind of to the point, and then you have your more elongated ones. And initially, of course, our eye always goes to, oh, let's just make it short and simple. But as I kept reading a little bit more of Lodi, for the city of Lodi, I have to just say that I really enjoyed kind of reading through what they had for their code of ethics. They had a couple pages here. But I think it just got into the details of how we as a city council can move forward, work together, work together with the city and staff. And so, my recommendation would be to really highly look at the city of Lodi and their code of ethics and values to just kind of pick through a little bit of what they have. There's a couple things I'd like to change with what they have, but there, a lot of it is really good. So, my recommendation would be more to look at a little bit deeper of what the city of Lodi's code of ethics would be. Thank you.
Councilmember Kalfis, anything to add?
I agree with Councilwoman Alexander. Like our Madam City Clerk said, the first five policies here, we're already in practice. We're just putting them in writing. So, first, I would just make a motion to approve the first five items.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, and that passes five zero, so we can move on to more code of ethics conversation.
Yep, and then the code of ethics, that was really, like Councilwoman Alexander said, I agree. I liked the city of Lodi's. They were all good, but the city of Lodi seemed to be a little more lengthy. And really, this is just a code of ethics between us council members and how we interact with each other. So, I would appreciate everyone's input, as well as, I agreed with what Councilwoman Alexander said. I saw the changes that she was looking to implement, and I agree with the changes. And we can just go, I don't know how we want to do it, line by line, but all the other council members' input to see what we want to do with our code of ethics. But again, it's just the way that we interact with each other and whatever we all decide.
Okay, Councilmember Brown, would you like to add anything on code of ethics?
Yeah, I looked at, also liked the city of Lodi. But, I don't know, after reviewing the short and sweet ones, I kind of leaned on those. But, I mean, it is a code of ethics. And so, what happens if someone violates these codes of ethics? Was that discussed at the committee meeting?
Yes, it was, and we hold each other accountable, so.
How so?
That's a great question. It's up to the council on how we hold each other accountable. We talked about the censorship portion, and some councils in the past, not Temecula, but in other cities have had a, almost like, if this is disobeyed, if one of these code of ethics goes against, then we'll bring up, like, this is the rebuttal essentially, and this is what we'll do if that happens. For us, we spoke about it, and I don't know if that needs to be implemented. Like, if a council member goes against the fairness one, do we do this, X, Y, or Z? But we can, again, discuss as a council what we think is necessary if we do violate the code of ethics.
If I can jump in there, actually, just this morning, I had a great conversation with our city manager of that exact question. I was like, so, how do we kind of hold each other accountable if we can't hold each other accountable? So, City Manager, if I can just lean on you to kind of go through that answer, what you gave me this morning, that would be really helpful and be very clarifying.
Sure, I'll attempt to recall what we talked about. Yeah, these, this policy, as Randy mentioned, her and I could sit down and draft something, but we wouldn't be doing it justice because this is your, this is your policy. And this is, we're looking for your values, your individuality of how you view code of ethics in the assignment that you've taken on here. So, that's why we're deferring to you. But as for the importance of this, and yes, it did come up in subcommittee, like a lot of things, all five of you are there to hold one another, I believe, accountable for the behavior that you believe to be prudent for this office. And that's not something necessarily that the city manager or the city attorney can do or a requisite policy can do, but it is good to have good policy in place. And I think that's what we've been working on for three years. So, God forbid, there are things that come up or things that we need to refer to. It's nice, I know, I appreciate it, and I think Peter probably does as well, that we can refer to these documents. We can refer to these policies. But for the council, these are only as good as the five of you are going to commit to holding each other accountable. And we've talked about that a lot publicly and privately.
Thank you. And if I could just add to that also, one of the things, you know, we talked about the word boundaries. And I think this just kind of gives all of us, the five of us, the ability to just say, hey, listen, this is what we stand for. Let's try to stay within these boundaries. And at the same time, let's not forget that residents are also going to hold us accountable. It's not just the five of us. You know, our residents are here, and if they have something to say, I'm sure they're going to come and say it. So, I think all of us have experienced that. And so, that being said, it was a concern of mine. It's like, why are we, why are we doing any policies at all, right? Like, why are there any policies, period? So, but there need to always be some type of boundaries and some type of, something that we can uphold here and what we stand for as a body. So, does that answer your question? Or I think somebody had a statement or something.
No, I think that's good. Mayor Protimster.
So, my opinion of this policy is short and sweet is way better than long and complicated, and it's just a whole bunch of weeds in Lodi. And, you know, all these big, long ones, it's like, really, we should just have statements saying we're going to treat each other with respect. When we have a meeting in confidence, it stays in confidence, things like that, you know? Something that makes sense to us, but I'm looking at, you know, this document, and I'm thinking, oh, my gosh. You know, are you going to say, chapter one, number six A, you know, I've got an issue with you on this? And it's like, I don't want to go there. I just want us to be civil with each other, be honest with each other, and do the job we're here for, period. That, to me, is the code of ethics right there. Let's just do that. So, to me, shorter is better. I don't want to get into, you know, sixty details of, you know, what you think honesty is or whatever, you know? It's like, you're honest or you're not. I mean, that's pretty clear. And so, it's like, so I'm in favor of short. So, if we're going to follow anything, I love Huntington Beach. It's nice, short, sweet. We're done and over with. And, you know, I, that's where I'm at with this. I just, I go through Lodi and I go through, you know, Carlsbad. It's like six pages long. It's like, really? So, that's just my honest opinion, to be honest with you.
You're being honest even when it's uncomfortable to do so.
Yes.
Mayor, if I can add something?
Let me just go ahead and go, and then we can kind of all kind of circle back. I agree. I like the short and sweet. I think this is just really guardrails for us. And much like we've talked about with council policies, it's really incumbent upon us to hold each other accountable. But that means different things to different people, right? Like, being honest. If I'm being honest with you and you take exception to that, it's hard to sort of agree, you know, like, hey, I'm being honest, and this is super uncomfortable, and I don't enjoy doing this. But, you know, it needs to be done. So, you know, Huntington Beach was something that resonated with me when I read it. I agree, I don't want to go like, you know, hey, you violated, you know, two A and two D kind of thing. Like, it is important that we're responsible to the community. We're responsible to staff and each other as colleagues. I think we try to, you know, be fair and promote consistency and recognizing that these are public meetings, and at times, that doesn't always pan out, but we strive for that respect. We, you know, try to respect each other. And even when that means we have to say things that the other person's not going to like. And that's part of, you know, respecting not only the individual, but the process and the office that we hold. And then honesty, obviously, as well. So, I think the shorter, the better with this as well. And if that's something that we need to maybe go back to a subcommittee and talk about, or if this is, you know, something we can look and say, yeah, for me, you know, if we modeled, you know, something off of Huntington Beach, or even Elk Grove was very similar. They're both very similar.
Yeah.
I would be one hundred percent supportive and comfortable with, you know, either of those. I just think the more succinct we keep it, the easier it is for us as well to understand the rules of engagement and the like. And I think it's just important that we keep it as simple as possible, so. Those are my thoughts. Councilmember Alexander, you wanted to add something?
Yes, and actually, I agree with all of you on the extensiveness of the wording in between. If I can reiterate, and I should have clarified this, I think a little bit more of the highlighted words, and I know our people at home, or in the, in the audience can't see this, but it was words to me that really stuck out. So, if we're looking at things like ethical, professional, service-oriented, responsible, communicative, collaborative, and they had a word progressive, and I actually, I dug a little bit about this, and I thought the word of innovation, you know, something relevant and how we are in keeping up with things. Respect, honesty, compassion, and fairness, and those were kind of the words, I think, so I should have clarified. I don't love all the words in between, and I agree with the four of you on that, but I do love the highlighted words on how we should treat each other. So, I don't think we have to go into high definition, but what do we think about maybe those words and bringing some of those to conversation?
I agree with the mayor. Huntington Beach and Elk Grove are identical with the exception of fairness. The third bullet is different. And so, I think if we're going to go with short and sweet that we model off Elk Grove and then maybe insert some of the words that Councilmember Alexander spoke of, we can just call it good.
And I would, I would kind of echo that too, in the fact that everybody's definition is going to be different. That's why I think we should stick with the main definition of what, if we're talking fairness, let's apply that fairness to the city and the city staff and the city council. Let's apply responsibility to that of the city of Temecula and the city staff of Temecula and the city council. So, I think it should be very directive, not get into minutia of what your opinion of responsibility is.
Agreed.
I think it should be very stated simply and distinct. And again, this is more of a guiding document for us. It really has no power over us. You can censure me all you want. It doesn't take away my vote.
Right.
You know, so it really is kind of an irrelevant document, except for the fact when a new city councilman may come on, at least he has or she has a document that they can look at and say, okay, 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 okay. And so, but if they don't follow it, they don't follow it.
Right, exactly. I mean, that's with anything, right?
Yeah, so, so it's like, you're not going to jail. You're not going to, you know, sit in a corner somewhere. You're still going to sit right here. You're still going to be able to make your statements. And so, that's why short, simple, keep the definition simple, and let's go home.
And I think, Councilmember Alexander, you kind of brought up a good point. It's like, we can have this code of ethics. And at the end of the day, I think you said, the voters or people will have a say too. And really say like, well, this is what they agreed upon, and they're going beyond those guardrails, and we don't like that as a community. I mean, I think every document has value, and something like this is, I'm in support of. I think it would be, it would be good for us to, you know, agree on these terms and say, hey, this is the, again, the rules of engagement and how we work. But with respect to enforcement, I've always struggled with that, you know? Yeah, we can censure someone. At the end of the day, Council, Mayor Protimster, you're right. It doesn't change anything. It's just a public statement, which really kind of maybe adds just more fuel to the fire for a lot of these conversations. So, if we can just sort of look at Elk Grove and kind of pare that down and do it the Temecula way, I'm good with that.
So, do you need a motion on that?
So.
Or are you just direction?
Yeah, so just general direction is fine. I want to reiterate what we are hearing. What we are hearing is at least three members of the council saying that shorter is the preferred way to go. And Elk Grove is a good model for that shorter version. And then we're also hearing all five of the members say, but there is space for some of the things that Councilmember Alexander mentioned in the Lodi policy by way of the main bolded statements, the key words, to be included in Temecula's code of ethics as well. So, we have enough direction, I believe, at this point, Mr. City Manager, where we can take the Elk Grove version and then try to mesh it with the big, bolded concepts that are available in the Lodi one, and then take it to committee, and then we'll make sure that the subcommittee is good with it. And then we'll be bringing it back, you know, at either the first or second meeting in November, hopefully, and asking you guys to approve the last three policy and your code of ethics.
I think if you go beyond one page, then you've done too much.
Yeah, so, so, okay, I, that, that is.
No 10-point font either, 12-point?
I, I appreciate that. For the record, Lodi's policy is only two pages, so that is something to be, to be noted. But we will absolutely try to stick to a one-pager, and that'll be good for ease of reference because we will be incorporating this manual and the nominating process for elections as well. So we'll make sure we have a part of that.
Okay, and, and it'll go back to subcommittee, so you'll get an opportunity to weigh in there, too, so that's good. Okay, I'll move that item then.
Second.
Oh, we don't need to move it at all? You're good with it? Okay.
We're good with the general direction.
All right, fair enough. Okay, we are moving to the end of our City Council meeting, so I have items for future City Council agendas, anything for future City Council agendas? All right, city managers' report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one slide, if I could throw it up there. Thank you, Jonathan. Just wanted to bring this to the community's attention. Temecula Valley Hospital, one of our esteemed corporate partners and medical providers, is hosting here on our campus a community meeting, November 13th, from 6:00 to 7:00. You're all invited. It is their desire to have an open dialogue, Q and A, about the expansion of, proposed, proposed expansion of their medical campus, including a larger emergency room, as well as a second tower, as well as medical office, and also the concept around a behavioral health hospital addition. So we just wanted to put that out there and encourage everyone. It'll be here at City Hall again, November 13th, from 6:00 to 7:00, in the conference center across the way. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate your report, Aaron, and just want to highlight, there is a email address there to, for the public to send their questions in advance, and I think if they did that, that'll help, one, the meeting itself go, I think, a lot smoother because they can dispel some of the misinformation. So I'm in favor of anyone that asks questions, email your questions in advance so they can be prepared for the comments.
Perfect. Agreed. And thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we did have a closed session tonight, and at that closed session, the council, by a vote of 5 to 0, authorized the settlement of the Grettler versus city of Temecula case in the amount of $350,000 that will be paid through the city's insurance carrier.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead and move to adjournment. I do have a slide that I'd like to put up. Recently, a member of our Cal Fire family, Chief Mike Ritchie, passed away. Mr. Ritchie was a battalion chief here in the city of Temecula from 1999 to 2003. We want to adjourn in his memory and honor, and just lift up his family and friends in this difficult time. And we're adjourned.